Interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 978-772-8220. Note new Zoom number. Or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM@air.ma.us or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. If I could ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have any amendments to the agenda?
I don't have any.
Nope. Take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye, the agenda is approved. Any announcements tonight? Okay, great. All right. Are anyone here for public input? Okey dokey. All right, so we will move on to the public hearing.
Town of Air notices a public hearing for Air Select Board. The Air Select Board will be conducting an in-person and remote participation public hearing on Tuesday, June 17, 2025, at 6:02 PM regarding a petition by National Grid to construct a line of underground electrical conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures, under and across the public way or ways hereinafter named. WR 30893884, Bishop Road and Park Street, National Grid to install underground facilities beginning at a point approximately 300 feet west of the central line of the intersection of Park Street and Bishop Street and continuing approximately 2,100 feet in an east-to-south direction. Install approximately 2,100 feet of 9.5-inch concrete-encased conduits from Substation to New Manhole, 5578 Park Street. Intersection at Bishop Road and Park Street to Brook Street is on Mass DOT. Install approximately 250 feet of 2.5-inch concrete-encased conduits from New Three-Way Manhole to Ryser Pole, 2-25 Bishop Road, New Two-Way Manhole to Ryser P23-50 Park Street, New Two-Way Manhole to Ryser P9-2 Park Street, and Ryser P7 Park Street. Work will include the installation of three, three-way, and five-two-way manholes.
Is there anyone here from National Grid?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, you want to tell us what's going on?
Um, so, we are putting new substation in for liability purposes. And due to that, infrastructure being put in place, we need to re-feed the primary. And we're going to do three separate feeds that will hopefully provide more reliable power to the town and towns in the area.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Yes?
Madam Chair, members of the board, the petition did go through the interdepartmental review process, and there were no objections or concerns.
The DPW did have one that was in the packet. Evan, did you see that? That was sent to you guys last week.
Yes, yeah, so I have it in hand. So, they mentioned that one of the portions of the project was in a state road, so I assume that they were concerned about permits with regards to that portion.
Yeah.
Which they should have been pulled. And then the DPW also requested that there would be coordination with the appropriate town departments to review the project, do and significant impact it will have on Park Street for its duration.
Sure.
So, the contracting, so this job's going to be bid out to a contracted crew. They should be taking part in those processes, even if you guys didn't request it. It's a large and scale project where they would need to get everyone involved to make sure that the timelines are appropriate.
Great, sounds good. And when would you expect, you said that this has to go out to bid, so when would you expect it to maybe being done?
I do not have that information.
Okay. But you'll give us like a notice?
Yes, yeah, somebody from National Grid will reach out to the town and alert you, alert the appropriate authorities to when a crew is selected for the process and the work is scheduled.
Okay. I have no further questions, anybody else?
Nope, sounds good.
Take a motion?
I will make a motion to...
Oops, wait a minute, now we have question.
Do you have a comment?
Oh, yeah. Please state your name and address.
My name is Dr. Peter Brady, I live at 75 Park Street. And so I live, I received a certified letter last week.
Right.
And this is the plan that is being executed, and I am that Red Arrow.
Okay.
And so this is the third construction that National Grid is doing right next to us, over the weekends and all, and it's just quite a bit. And I just wanted to sort of make sure that you're aware that we live there, and this is, over the weekend, is quite disturbing. And we've asked in the past to maybe get some shielding, maybe something, and it's hasn't been really met with much, I guess, addressing anything. And so I just wanted to sort of state my case that it's, from what it sounds like, we're looking at yet another construction, yet more years of weekends of banging and, you know, whatnot, so this is, I don't know, I wish it was different.
Yeah. So can we take a note that when the town is notified, that, you know, maybe that this will at least be looked into, and hopefully we can alleviate a little bit of it?
Uh huh.
Yeah?
Yes.
Danny Ruiz, Town Planner, so the project actually did come before the Planning Board, and the resident did raise his concerns. We did, the Planning Board did go out there, we had a site walk with National Grid, their engineering team and their attorneys. It was determined at that point that where the resident preferred the screening, we couldn't do, it couldn't be done because of the wetlands in the area, the proximity to the slopes in that area, so there was really no way to provide that screening that was requested. But this, the initial project up at Bishop and Park Street was reviewed, and so the concerns that the resident did bring, it did come to the Planning Board. We tried, but it just did not work out that way.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sounds like there's nothing that can be really done, unfortunately.
When this project goes into effect, how long is it expected to take? Do you have any idea?
It's a pretty, it's a rather large project, so I would be lying if I said it would take anything less than a month and a half, so probably two months would be the expected
Well, unfortunately. The only thing we can ask is that it continue to be observed, okay? And if there's any way to alleviate, you know, some of the destruction, not the destruction, disruption, that would be great, okay? So...
Thank you for the efforts.
Did we have a motion?
Not yet.
Okay.
Then I'll make a motion to accept the poll petition by National Grid as submitted in the packet.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
I make a motion to close out the public hearing.
Okay.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, next up, well, isn't this exciting? Doing the ratification of the appointment for the new Building Commissioner, Mr. Michael Wallace. Come on down!
Madam Chair, members of the board, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Michael Wallace for appointment as Building Commissioner. As the board is aware of the previous, well, the Building Commissioner, Mr. Schultz, will, last day will be, officially will be June 30th. Upon his notification for retirement, the town advertised for the position of Building Commissioner on the town's website, social media, the Mass Municipal Association, job posting, website of, we received seven applications. All of the applications were screened by a screening committee consisting of myself, the Assistant Town Manager, the Town Planner, and the DPW Director. Upon that process, it was unanimous and enthusiastic to recommend Mr. Wallace for the position. He is the best qualified for that. The board has his credentials in the packet. I just want to just highlight for the public that Mr. Wallace has served as the Town of Air's Assistant Building Inspector in zoning enforcement offices since 2022. He was conditionally appointed Building Commissioner on April 9, 2025. He will complete full certification by the end of this month. He's been performing the functions of the Building Commissioner since the end of April, when the previous Building Commissioner announced his retirement. Prior to working for the Town of Air, Mr. Wallace has extensive experience in the building and construction fields. He holds a construction supervisor license, a building official certification, and as mentioned, will complete the full certification the end of this month. Mr. Wallace is a United States veteran, having served as a United States Navy Seabee from 2005 to 2009, which included deployment to Iraq. And I just want to highlight specifically in his letter of intent, that also really stood out, is, "I intend to enforce the air zoning bylaws strictly and fairly. I would also continue contributing to the town's efforts regarding the modernization of zoning requirements to better serve the goals of the Town of Air. While upholding the provisions of the Mass Building Code, I also want to continue to work alongside contractors, clients, and homeowners to help them achieve their goals while benefiting the Town of Air simultaneously. I care about air in its future and would like to continue working here as Building Commissioner." So with that, Madam Chair, I'm respectfully requesting that the Select Board vote to ratify the appointment of Mr. Michael Wallace as Building Commissioner for the town effective July 1, 2025. And of course, the board may have questions for Mr. Wallace.
Questions? Questions?
No, sounds like you're more than qualified.
This is Jack.
You all excited to see your daddy get this job? Well, I think it's great, I always love it when we can, you know, promote from within. Love that you're a Navy veteran and a Seabee, I have special fondness for Seabees. So I think that this is a wonderful opportunity for the town, and very excited about this. I think you're going to do good things.
I appreciate the opportunity, so...
Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion that the board ratify contract with Michael Wallace for Building Commissioner.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye, congratulations.
Congratulations.
That, I'm just going to add too, we thank Charlie for everything he's done.
Love to thank Charlie, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Okay, so with that, let's move on to the joint meeting of the Select Board and Planning Thank you, have a nice evening. Try to stay dry!
The Building Commissioner in charge of that?
Yeah. Whoever's in charge, we need to find somebody who's in charge of the weather.
You will need to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Do I read the notice first?
I would say yes, just to be safe.
I'd too, sure.
Sure, yes, sir. Like to open the Tuesday, June 17, Special Hybrid Meeting, the Air Planning Board or the Air Select Board. This meeting of the hearing of the Air Planning Board will be held in-person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID 978-772-8220, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Danny Ruiz, Town Planner, at D R U Y Z at air.ma.us or 978-772-8220, extension 144, prior to the Make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Kathleen Cashell to the Air Planning Board.
Okay, I thought we'd discuss what was going on a little bit.
We have, well, I'm taking the lead. Oh, I believe you said, okay, let me, may I have a second chance here?
No!
I had a procedural glitch. So, two years ago, we came before the same board to present Kathleen Cashell as an associate member, and at that time, we went through her resume, and she was more than well-qualified and certainly had the enthusiasm. Since that time, she's now had two years of experience under her belt, and the board has experienced her as a diligent, willing, active, and very intelligent contributor to the board, and she's certainly helped elevate the conversations that we've had around this table. So, I want you to be aware that this is unanimous across the entire board, and since, as you know, since Jeff Tillotson stepped down as one of the board members, there's a vacancy, so the obvious, this is a fulfillment with the whole purpose, or one of the purposes of having an assistant, having, so alternate plan member, planning board member, that she can step in should a member resign, and that situation has occurred. So we're hoping that you'll join us and approve her appointment. And I believe that would be, what, filling out Jeff's turn or to the next election? To the next election, yeah.
Okay, now that we've got that. So, and I just want to add a thank you to Mr. Jeff Tillotson for all his hard work, on his time on the Planning Board, and I hope he has safe travels on his little expedient that he's going to be doing on his bike! Does the Select Board have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I think they were answered.
Okay, all right. So, I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the nomination.
Second?
Oh, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye, okay. Now you?
So I make the motion for the Planning Board?
No, she already made the motion. It's a majority of the chair.
It's combined.
Oh, so we've, oh, aye! So, aye?
Aye.
Everybody says aye.
Everyone says aye.
And you want the job, right? So, okay.
Yes, yeah, we're good?
I think so.
Oh...
The Planning Board, oh.
Yes, I make a motion to adjourn this public meeting of the Air Planning Board.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we congratulate you?
Got married in this room, so I don't know which is more exciting.
I did, yeah, I sure did.
Really, when did you get married?
Great question.
Oh, my God! Oh, now you're a public planner, now you're married!
I think you were 21 during the COVID. Yeah.
Okay, their excuse, because those years mess with people's brains.
But we'd be celebrating in '22, but in the last five years.
Plus or minus.
That's funny. All right, thank you. Okay. All right. So now we're over to Robert.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. In the packet, you have the warrants that were reviewed and approved since the Select Board last met on June 3. In terms of the administrative update, we're in the process of closing out fiscal year '25 and getting ready for fiscal year '26 on July 1. It looks like all of the town's accounts are in good shape. There is the one reserve fund transfer that this board previously approved for the town clerk's office, which will go to the Finance Committee tomorrow. That meeting got delayed, but the other meeting tomorrow. But I think we're in good shape to close out FY '25 and look to FY '26. In addition, finishing up all of the personal service contracts, evaluations, all departments are getting ready to start their various capital projects, whether it's the bridge, the roof is going to be going out to bid shortly for the library. I met with the Facilities Director today, who wants to get the library out to bid, the roof, be looking for the acoustic project at the Great Hall to get going on that. So, it's a busy time, but a good time, as far as moving forward on that front. So, unless there are any questions, administrative questions from the board, I just have a couple of action items this evening. The first is the annual reappointments, sort of part two, and I want to thank the Assistant Town Manager for putting this together, and you have in your packet a memo with all of the individuals that are being recommended for reappointment to boards and committees that are under the Select Board.
Which one are we talking about again? I'm sorry, are we, because I was looking at something, are we talking about the other people? Okay, okay, just want to make sure.
Yep.
And everybody staggered now?
The only one that needs to be staggered is left is the Council on, no.
Affordable Housing?
No, those are staggered now.
Okay.
Zoning Board. They're next year, we have to wait to next year to do it.
I thought we did it last year.
It took a two, it takes two years to, like Council on Aging, we did last year, and we're doing it again this year. So they're spread.
Right.
So, but zoning, there was no one up, so it would be next year's, because two people or three people expire next year, so we have to fix it next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just got a quick question on, because I don't see it on his list here, but for capital, we haven't, I know we haven't decided who the board member is, but on the website it showed that they expired last year, like two weeks after they got appointed, and that we have another member where they expired last year, but I don't see them on this. So when does their, I think it is, on capital? When does his appointment expire? Because on the website, it's written wrong, it's written on 2024.
All right, we'll have to, let me check that.
Didn't he get reappointed last time?
I'm asking, I don't remember.
I think he did, it was part one.
Okay, he was on that.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
The resident, yep.
But we'll fix the dates, I'll make a note.
Okay, all right. All right, anybody have any questions?
Yep.
Make a motion that the board approve the reappointments to boards and committees as presented in the packet.
Seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
Thank you. And then the next item, of course, is the Select Board has various representatives to various town committees, and as is past practice of the board, each year reviews those assignments, if you will, and I put in the packet right now, the various boards and committees with representatives and who those are. Air Affordable Housing Trust has a Select Board Member, Copeland, Capital Planning, Select Board Member Tavarez, the Devon's Jurisdictional Framework Committee, Select Board Member Livingston, the Devon's Resolution Committee, Select Board Member Tavarez. The Executive Byboard is currently vacant, as we discussed with the FinCom back in the spring, sort of holding that at abeyance right now. The OPEB Board of Trustees, Select Board Member Copeland, and the Rate Review Committee, Select Board Member Livingston, as the current assignments.
I'm good to keep in mind.
Same.
Same.
All right, that's easy.
Do we need a motion?
I think we're good.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. And then, obviously, Friday will be the first official day of summer, we hope.
It's supposed to get hot.
Yeah, it's going to get hot. So, wanted to just discuss the 2025 Select Board Summer Meeting Schedule, just for the public's benefit, as in previous years, the board has adopted a summer meeting schedule, meeting once in July and once in August. Of course, if other matters present themselves, the board has always been willing to meet if we need additional meetings. The past practice has been for the 3rd Tuesday in July, which this year would be Tuesday, July 15 at 6:00, and the 3rd Tuesday in August, which this year would be Tuesday, August 19 at 6:00. But of course, it's the will of the board to discuss and set your schedule.
Which those two dates are regularly, would be regularly scheduled, dates anyway, so. So we're just getting, not doing the first date. I'm fine with those dates, anybody else?
Uh, July is a mess for me, the 22nd is the only Tuesday that I have free, crazy enough. The August date's fine.
I can do the 22nd.
I wouldn't be able to do the 15th, so...
So the problem with the 22nd is the Planning Board is meeting, and they already have stuff scheduled out into July for like public hearings and whatnot? So I don't, I would have to do it different. Because I've seen some of their public stuff already go out, so it's already in the newspaper.
What about that Wednesday, the 23rd? Or are you, are you not good that whole week?
No, the week before, I'm not good the whole week. The 16th works fine for me.
Okay, 16th works fine for me.
I'm gone that whole week.
He's gone all that week.
Oh, it's summer, summer's always, no, we're talking about the 16th.
All right, what about the 23rd, well?
I'm good with the 23rd.
In that, let me just make sure.
I'm good with the 23rd.
23rd, 1, 2, 3, that would, or, well, yeah. That would actually work, because it's the 4th Wednesday of the month, ZPA meets on the 3rd Wednesday of the month. So the 23rd would be open.
Okay. Do you guys want to do the 23rd?
That works fine for me.
So we have Wednesday, July 23 at 6:00, and then Tuesday, August 19 at 6:00.
Yep, that date works fine.
All right, okay, so July 15, or I mean, July 23 and July, or August 19, good Lord, try to say that again. So, okay. All right.
Madam Chair, unless there's any questions from members of the board, that concludes my report for tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, anything under new business, Select Board questions?
I don't have any, I have none.
Okay, and meeting minutes from June 3?
I did not have any.
I didn't notice anything.
I have no comments.
Okay, I'll take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the June 3, 2025 Select Board meeting, as submitted.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye, the meeting minutes are approved.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Make a motion...